Please rise for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Again, good morning and welcome. Move to item three, any citizen desiring to be heard.
This is the first, I'm sorry, this is the first time I've been here and I, I want it, my concern is getting Westminster paid.
And if you could give us your name and address.
Oh, Deborah Hall.
Okay.
And I live in Shady Oaks Division off of Westminster.
Okay, thank you.
So, is there any provision or money to pave that road or even, I know they were out yesterday grading, but they, I go through tires, it tears up my car.
Sure. We, and to be honest with you, we've got a lot of county roads are in poor shape and we're doing our best as, as a group to, and we'll go along. Citizens commenting at our, at our meetings are normally allowed to comment on anything on the agenda.
Okay.
If, if you need to speak with your county commissioner about a specific road issue, then we encourage you to do that right after the meeting and I think that's.
What was your, what was your name again?
Deborah Hall, D-E-B-O-R-A-H-H-A-L-O.
Open Meeting Act keeps us from having an interative or back and forth discussion with the public on items that aren't on the agenda.
Okay.
So during the public meeting, but afterward, we can certainly talk about, talk to you about.
I'd be glad to meet with you as soon as, as soon as we're up here.
Thank you.
Anything else, ma'am?
No.
Any other citizen desiring to be heard? Hearing none, we'll move on to item four, consideration of possible action on minutes of May the 3rd, 2021. I'll move, we approve this presented.
I will second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved unanimously. Item five, consideration of possible action on final flat of the landing at Cedar Valley in the northeast quarter of section 24-16 north more west. Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
What do you need to sign is all you can cover.
I'm always curious about the language on here. You get it on here where you're going to maintain the roads and.
As a matter of fact, she took me, sent me packing once already to fix it. I, I got it.
That's, that's where the, it's.
Right.
One other thing that I would like to acknowledge while we're here talking about this, and that is, you know, we're going to be doing quite a bit of work on industrial between 74 and. And I've asked your builder and I'm going to ask you that we work together on using an alternate route into the back of that for construction entrance so that we don't tear that road up because I can't, I can't afford to rebuild it and then have all those concrete trucks and those big trucks and then tear that road up again.
What we're going to do is, and including our roads in Cedar Valley that we're, we really can't handle coming through there. We're going to put signage on Prairie Grove, Ron 74 for a construction entrance on that back direction.
So we've already started shale on Prairie Grove there off of 74 and, and our plan is to bring that all the way up and, and back up, back down, back up May Avenue to do construction entrance and, and use that. We really, really, really would prefer not to have any construction traffic over on industrial because we're, we're going to start this fall, moving those, reditching that and building up and, and that kind of stuff.
You got it.
Okay.
And there were built roads right now, so we'll have that through and finish May.
Okay. All right.
You're going to find a signature line because I'm not seeing one. I'm not seeing one anywhere.
Yeah, I thought, I thought originally Cedar Valley was going to adopt that over there.
Yeah, they have a lot of meetings that, you know, there's, what goes in, they're not real sure that they like to be responsible for the roads, which is fine, you know? And so a homeowner's association is going to be able to take care of that and they're.
I can sign it, but I just don't.
There's no place where the commissioners are approving for you, for them to sign.
Can, can we, can we move this to our special meeting for next Wednesday?
Can you get them reprinted or? I know I already sent you out once to reprint it.
Can, can we not just sign it there somewhere?
I, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not charging flats. The lady down the end of the table is.
Well. I can pencil something on there really quickly if that'll work for you all, just to acknowledge the board, because the board has to approve it for us to file it.
Easy.
She's throwing stones.
In this little spot right here.
Well, I'll move, we approve.
I'll second.
I'm going to check and see what she writes on there.
I'll second after I get the book together.
So how many homesides do you guys put down over there?
There's 99 lots. I would think that about 85 buildable.
Right.
Spots.
That's, that's a significant increase in, in our part of Logan County over there.
So if you just right here across that, should you all.
Appreciate y'all, the, I know there's some risk involved in that, so appreciate the, what you all are doing over there.
Thank you. And we're hoping to be a good.
She's still using it.
No, there's another, there's the most.
Well, there's one here.
Okay, fine. So you already got them pre-sold or?
No, we haven't really started doing that quite yet.
So if you've been over to that corner of Cedar Valley, May and Industrial, there was a, a landing strip over there. A fellow had a light plane and, and that kind of stuff and that whole, that whole quarter section over there is what's, what's being developed, right?
With the exception of 30 acres that one of the heirs kept there.
Yeah. It's a really, really large part of the county. It's just, happens to be the May Avenue running south of there is one of the worst roads in my part of the world, so we have to do quite a bit of work to get that up.
That's okay. There's anything we can do with this, consistent in drainage or material drainage.
No, but these older ones could be, they're not going to be for us.
Certainly like to talk with you about that. Just the gravel itself isn't expensive getting it hauled as, where our, where our, introduce you to a friend of mine. The hauls, little gravel.
Once they're done, then you take them over to the office and file them. Get them recorded, once it's recorded, they're going to hand it in my office back. You've got to go get the little, small copy made, the legal size, and bring that back to the office today.
Just eight and a half by 14.
Yeah. But we need, it needs to have all the recording information before you make the small, not the wide.
And Monty did have all the verbiage on there that we look for on the district one to maintain them.
Yes, they have on a daily basis.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, but appreciate y'all, what you're doing over there.
Appreciate it.
Anything else on item five? And we'll move on to item six, consideration of possible action on update and/or change and/or approval of the Logan County five-year SERV plan to include decision to remove the 2025 I-35 interchange project from the current Logan County SERV plan. Gentlemen, I took the, we all received, I think we all received a, a letter from ODOT. I took the liberty of drafting a response to that. The letter from ODOT indicated that they understood that we did not want to participate in that I-35 interchange project and I believe that that's counter to what we've talked about in the past, that we do want, we did want to and still want to. However, we were told that the, the, another party to that agreement no longer wants to do it or can't get the funds. And with that, I've drafted this letter that talks about what the contractual requirements were for funding and the construction of, of that interchange. And so I pointed out some areas in there that basically say that we've got the funding, we've made it available, so we're still in it as long as all the other parties that have agreed to this project are, are in it as well. And if they're not, and they've responded as being out of it, then that releases all parties as per the contract language. What I'd like to do is, is get your concurrence today to send this back to ODOT and that will, I talked to Shelley Williams Wednesday at the CD meeting that we had and she said that she would just like to have something that says that we either are keeping it on the SERV program right now temporarily, if it's temporarily, it's temporarily, or, or we want to take it off. Well, I don't think we want to take it off today because we haven't been notified of any other issues officially. So I think that, that letter gives us the most versatility, I guess, or wiggle room. So if, with your concurrence, we'll, we'll use that letter, send it back to ODOT. Shelley will use that to keep our SERV funds on that, on that five-year plan for the I-35 interchange unless something else changes that, that voids that contract.
Well, I, I don't have an issue with it. You know, I thought they sat here in our meeting room and said they was going to get a letter from Oklahoma County saying that they're withdrawing.
And that's what they told us and not only that, it was our understanding that they, they had already set enough or said that they were going, that they had the intent to withdraw and that's what we replied with, we would only withdraw from that contract if Oklahoma County's true intent was to withdraw.
Right.
We didn't, and then the, the, the letter that they sent back to us basically made it sound like we were the ones withdrawing. And, and I, I agree with what you've said and what, what you've replied back, so that kind of says no, we have not said that our intention was to withdraw. We said that if the other party was to withdraw, then we would.
Right.
As well.
Right. Yeah, then, I mean, we wouldn't have an option if the other party withdraws. I mean, all bets are off, all parties are, are out of the deal for the contract language. The other thing that I did want to talk about and make, put on the record here is that this $3 million for the Waterloo I-35 project is in our SERV five-year plan. And if that becomes a non-project, we, I, I want us to be able to reallocate that money to other projects that we have waiting, that, that we want to use that money for rather than have it go back to someplace else for somebody else to figure out what to do with it.
Right.
Because we've got plenty of projects in, in waiting in the wings and we've also got, for example, I, I know you've got roads that need overlaid, I've got roads, I mean, Waterloo Road, for example, we've got several miles of Waterloo Road that need to be overlaid. Not that it needs to take $3 million to do it, right? So a mile, a mile road to be overlaid by SERV will probably take at least a half a million dollars because that's the way they do business. I mean, Monty, you and I just laid a mile of asphalt and it, it cost the county about a hundred thousand dollars to, to lay new asphalt and repair, do a big base repair. Anyway, I want to make sure that, that we are thinking about projects that we want to do with that money and, and, and move on from there. I mean, with a million dollars, I could repair about eight miles of Broadway going through there, resurface that, in a desperate way.
But that's the sad part, they won't let us use it like it ought to be used. We've got to follow their, their rules.
Well, we can use it for overlay, we just got to use their construction standard to do it with, right?
And you could actually do it for a hundred thousand mile, but they want to spend.
A million dollars. Yes, yeah, indeed. All right. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve this letter going forward. I'll move, we approve.
I will second.
Yes, ma'am.
So are we, are we not going to address the, the five-year plan at this time?
We're going to.
Or do we want to submit the current plan with a note that says tentative or may be amended or? And, and I ask that because we have one project at the top here that's fallen off. Crescent Creek Bridge is done.
Right.
And Coltrane is being let.
That's the rumor.
So we've heard, but, but Crescent Creek is totally off the plan.
They're, they're building it as we see.
It's under construction, yeah, so it's off the plan. So I, I didn't know, I mean, do we want?
It's really not off the plan until there are no more change orders that can come forward.
Okay. So I guess my question is, do we not submit anything for SERV at this time or do you want to submit what we currently have subject to revision?
I, I think we should submit what we currently have, subject to.
Revision.
Change by the Board of County Commissioners for, you know, the, I mean, the law allows us to, to send in changes as, as we need to, so if we need to change it, we'll change it. And, and that's what Shelley said, that she would not, even though there was utility and funds that's been encumbered, she would not allow them to be spent on utilities or right-of-way until this issue's cleared up.
Okay.
So, and she told me that she would watch it, she would make sure that didn't happen and she gave me her promise and I'm going to hold her to that promise.
So if I can clarify so I know what I'm sending in? The plan in your hand is what was submitted last year.
Right.
We will leave this the same except on priority number two, which is Coltrane, I need to remove that clause about the redesign because that's a settled issue.
Yes.
And then I will submit it with the same dollars. I will note that it's subject to revision based on Waterloo. And then I'll certify it and send it in. Is that my understanding correct?
I'm good with that.
Yes.
Thank you, Troy.
So back to the motion was made, Monty and then?
Cody said.
Cody?
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. And with that, I will sign this. All right, item seven, consideration of possible action on resolution vacating a part of section line lying between sections 12 and 13, township 17 North, range 3 West, also known as a part of County Road 73 between Broadway and Bryant in District 3.
This road has never been open and I think people in the past have built on where the right-of-way would be and they're just wanting to get it cleaned up so that it never will be open so they don't have to carry their houses down.
I certainly understand that. I'll move, we approve.
I will second.
I appreciate it. Have a motion and a second and further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved unanimously. Monty, I'm, I'm not in favor of taking property away from folks.
Yeah.
And coming back later. That eminent domain is something I have never used and don't ever intend to.
The section line has just never been open.
Item eight, discussion regarding the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, funds, possible uses and establishing procedures for distribution. So gentlemen, Troy, the county clerk and I have had some discussions about this and what it is and what it's not and what it never will be. We, it's very difficult for me to wrap my arms around what we can use this for right now. And one of the things that we talked about was the possibility of maybe putting together a, a committee to talk to the principals that are responsible for some of the other county offices and county funds and get some ideas from them and then come back and make a possible recommendation to the board on, on how to move forward with that. I, I don't see us using a lot of money just to spend money. I mean, that, that doesn't sit well with me, being a small government kind of person. But if there's something that we can use the funds for that benefits our county, then I'm, benefits our taxpayers, I'm all for that. But as it sits right now, the 9.3 million dollars that were eligible to receive, I'll use that term because they're not sending it now, we have to apply for it. But the 9.3 million dollars were eligible to receive, we can't spend any of that on transportation, infrastructure, no roads, no bridges, nothing like that. We can't improve anything that we really, really are desperate to, to have fixed in our county. So it's, it's kind of a, a, a feint, if you will, as far as saying we're going to make life easier for you and we're going to let you use money if you use it the way we want you to. But we're not, I, I don't think we need to be building monuments to a socialist agenda, you know, quit talking after that.
So what, what kind of committee are you thinking? I mean, just like one, one elected official?
I think one commissioner, uh, working with, so we got the county health department, county sheriff's department and, and some of the other county offices to get their input and their thoughts and on, on what they think that we can, can do, should do, that sort of stuff. And then have that come back to the Board of Commissioners to be discussed and, for any action that we would like to take after that. Troy, do you have some paperwork on that?
Um, well, um, the funds were made available on the, May the 10th. We had originally been told they were just going to auto deposit, they're not, we actually have to do a bunch of paperwork and file for them. 151 pages of rules that we're sorting through. I've been in three Zoom meetings this week to go over what we can and cannot use the funds for. There's quite a few items that are detailed that Logan County isn't even involved in. Broadband infrastructure, sewer, sewer water, infrastructure, which is pushed pretty heavy, but, but our county is not involved in those activities. There are some other activities I think we can make fit. Roads and bridges and, and has been pointed out exclusively in these meetings I've been in are excluded except for, there's a clause for lost revenue, which is going to be a, a huge undertaking for me to go through and do all the, the ledgers for determining that. But anything that would have went under that, back to roads and bridges, but there won't be additional big funding to build roads and bridges. This agenda item has no action attached. At the time it was, we put it on here, we knew nothing other than it was coming and we didn't, I, there was no way for me to know exactly how to agendize. So this is a discussion only at this time. The county is eligible for 9.3 million dollars. It is half this year and half next May. We don't get all of it at one time. So that's really important. And other than that, I think the idea of, of a group sitting down and trying to sort through and then put together a proposal is going to be the best way to move ahead.
Right. And the, the, get an idea about the group that we could put together, you and I talked about.
Yeah, I, I think that we need to involve the county officers, we need to involve the health department, health services, public safety services are, are pretty detailed out as eligible for different expenses. All I keep hearing in these different Zoom meetings and they've been with NACO as well as the Department of Treasury is that they, they've made very broad. Well, the problem is, you know, 3,000 counties, we don't all operate the same. So what I think they're seeing as some broad uses is really not depending on your county situation. But I do think the health department, I do think that the county officers, uh, to at least start sorting through possible uses and then maybe put together a plan and of suggestion of, of how best to use the money for the community.
So any volunteers to sit on that board for that committee?
I, I would, if I can interrupt, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
There's not an action item on this agenda?
I know.
I'd say it should be the chairman of the board.
I think that's a good.
Do we have this on Wednesday's agenda?
We do, and actually Wednesday's agenda would allow for the appointment of a chairperson to form a committee. So I left it kind of broad, I wasn't sure how.
I think we should take Wednesday for you guys to think about that.
So basically the, the, the next action that this board would, as it sits right now, would be to appoint a chairperson essentially to form a committee.
That'd be Wednesday. Okay. Okay. So my biggest, my suggestion, and Troy kind of shot me down on that, was to propose to build a COVID-19 treatment facility on the sixth floor of our sixth floor building. And that way we could afford to pay for getting the elevator fixed, getting the, the heat and air system, the lights and electrical and all that stuff done and getting it all dried in so we could afford, so we could actually put that on the sixth floor of the, and.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
But Troy said that probably wasn't.
Yeah, I, I don't think that I can make that connect on the report. Chairman, as it sits right now, unless you all would like me to change?
Chairman, as it sits right now, unless you all would like me to change it what I have on this verbiage, "Consideration of possible action on selecting a committee chairperson for the purpose of forming a committee with elected officers and county departments regarding use of the American Rescue Plan Act funds."
I think it's probably okay the way it reads.
And that's for Wednesday?
Yes. That's a special meeting.
There's documentation that has to be signed and done to move forward with the Department of Treasury. That is all stuff that wasn't nailed down to note to put on this agenda today.
Okay. Any further discussion on item eight? Hearing then, we'll move on to item nine. Consideration of possible action on accepting responsibility for building located on Broad Street and Villas, known as the Public Works Building, location of the election board, county election board.
I would move that we approve that and that be effective at the end of the fiscal year.
I second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second for this to be approved. Beginning in fiscal year 2022, if I understand the motion.
Correct.
Any further discussion? Hearing then, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion is approved unanimously. So for the, for the public, that's to kind of clear up some deed to land that the county owns and trust authority that has been taking care of the building. Well, because the county owns the property, we actually own the building as well. And so we're just getting all that straightened out legally. That's what that's about. Okay. Item 10. Consideration of possible action on resolution declaring surplus equipment for District 2.
Okay. I've got a couple pieces of equipment that I've, really, they're not safe to operate and kind of difficult to get parts for. The first one is a 2007 overbuilt trailer. It's a 35-ton, uh, ton trailer. Just trying to get, pretty much it just sits there. We don't use it because of the condition it's in. The other one is a 1995 Ford tractor. It's a 7740. It's having brake issues. It would cost more to repair it than what it is currently worth. The other one is a 1983 Bomag sheep's foot roller. That's actually, that one is just a parts roller. It actually does not run. It was bought and purchased as a parts roller. The other one is, it's twin. It runs, but it does not have brakes and the vibration does not work properly on it. Got a 1981 Rego roller that does not have brakes or the vibration does not work. So. And then the other one is a 1993 Ford F-350. It's just some equipment that pretty much we don't use, we can't use. And we've put more money into it than what's.
Good on me, we're. I'll second with the question, you're going to dispose of it at auction or?
We're gonna, I was going to contact Purple Wave.
Yep.
And then get with them and have them come down.
Sweet. Good idea. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, sir. Item 11. Consideration of possible action on detention transportation claim in the amount of $336.05 for March 2021.
I'll move we're approved.
I will second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the claims. Any further discussion? Hearing then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 12. Discussion of possible action on resolution appointing requisitioning officers for various accounts.
We have none for requisitioning.
I know we got one.
We do for receiving.
Item 13. Discussion of possible action on resolution appointing receiving officers for various accounts.
We have one for District 2.
I'll move we're approved.
I will second.
We didn't have two? Two individuals?
They're on one resolution.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
When you said one, I was confused. All right. Did we vote on item 13?
No.
Okay. We have.
I have a motion. Motion and second.
We got a motion and a second, item 13. Any further discussion? Hearing then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 14. Discussion of possible action on consent agenda. See, I got confused on how many was there and I forgot what we did. So Chris, you seem to like my idea on the six-story building.
Absolutely.
Didn't work for you that way.
I was thinking way, I was thinking that before you even said it. I've heard worse ideas for.
Totally. Well, of course. You've been covering government meetings for a long time, so yeah, you can dispose of that.
Your half, it's been a while since two months ago.
We don't want to share.
You want?
I didn't want to sign it. No, I might please me for me.
It's too sticky.
It worked real well.
Have you sold it to the state of Oklahoma yet?
No, I haven't even shared it with them. Last week, I rebuilt the transfer forms.
These are the direct office deals here.
I missed that motion.
Bonnie. I didn't want to find that one.
Oh, okay.
I'm against it. Let me tell you, don't be excited, Victor. Oh, mine. Keep them straight over there.
Rookie got the section on that one.
It comes out of my account if I sign it.
One minutes.
Troy, leave? Should leave a briefcase set next to the.
Yes.
Is it ticking?
No. Well, I can't hear very well.
It's right next to Bonnie down there. You never know what she's.
When he is over. Long time COVID season.
Communicable virus, sir. Right. Yeah, so we could be prepared for what was coming in the future.
Falls around the corner.
So we require masks on the six-floor always.
So I don't have to climb those stairs with it.
What's the elevator?
Before we get the elevator.
We need, you can't have, you know, sick people climbing the stairs, so you can't use the elevator. How many trees did we cut down this far? I was.
I'm not even through it all yet.
The county clerk didn't do that. She just loved her election bill, didn't she?
It was all in there together. It's just the report, not the.
Oh, okay.
The claims and everything. So that will finish consent.
I'll make a motion after Martin signs all the consent agenda.
I will second.
Would you oppose that? I mean, candy. I was just curious. Not calling yet. Can we get the ancestors' air conditioner fixed, do you know?
I think that after the meeting, I think Sarah was moving ahead with getting it done. I don't know if it has completed yet.
I'll ask. We did that last meeting. Kind of think we proved that.
It's in the slide. Actually, they only lost one wall and became a living in a venture.
So I've got a motion and a second on consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing then, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Item 15. Discussion of possible action on approving claims for payment for May 2021. Like it, sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's cute. It's not really cute. It's nice.
Is there coffee and breakfast? Well.
You're welcome to get some coffee in the break room, ma'am. It's at this door right here.
There's water and coffee. Thank you.
How long would we bring a lunch?
Oh, yeah.
I got your camera.
Molly voted against it.
Molly voted.
We tried bringing donuts, but the sheriff eats them off of him. That was disappointing.
Well, I'm starting with the new admin, so I'm looking forward to getting to the long show up here. What'd you say? Ooh, emergency management.
I know. What'd I do?
Uh huh. Nothing. That's the problem.
Ask me, shall we receive orders?
I knew it was coming. I knew it was coming. All started with so far, so good. Goes down, feel like.
Yeah, Martin, I got one too. Don't feel, don't feel alone.
You didn't say a little, couldn't remind you. I'll make a motion to approve the claims.
I will second.
I'll be right there.
It's only because I didn't have one.
You gotta make a deal for your hand, boy. Eight dollars and 28 cents over, guess we were. Molly, 40 cents, come on.
Hey, over is over.
There you go. Okay, I've got a motion and a second to approve claims. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 16. Discussion of possible action on approving purchase card payments for May 2021. then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 18. Discussion of possible action on approving purchase card payments for May 2021. Forty-six dollars and 20 cents. Move we approve. P. Cards.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on purchase card payment? Hearing then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Right. Item 17, from last time. Any citizens desiring to be heard?
Take it, Phil, buddy.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. My name is Troy Travis. I'm with Lawter Engineering. We've been providing bridge inspections at ODOT for over 27 years straight. Just kind of want to reintroduce our firm to you. New this year is we have three of our 15 employees actually within Lurin County now, and two of them were, I think, some of the best bridge engineers in the state. Would like you to consider us for any future roadway, bridge, bridge inspection project. In my fact, my brief of history, I've had 25 years at ODOT, eight years of it in Bridge Division, eight years as a county bridge coordinator, eight years as an assistant division engineer, and I finished my career with Oklahoma Turnpike Authority as director of engineering. I've now been running this office for five years, or in my fifth year, and believe you my card, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for your comments, and we'll be able to chat with you after meeting.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Item 18. Comments, announcements, questions by the Board of County Commissioners or other county officers and department heads. Thank you, Troy. We'll start with our emergency manager, Steve.
I got nothing.
Yeah, you do. Yeah, you do. You were recognized at the Guthrie FFA, right? Tell us a little bit about that.
So the anti-texting and driving campaign that the high school put on, we accepted a recognition for that from the Guthrie FFA banquet, along with the sheriff's office, the fire department, and some of the other different agencies that assisted with that.
That was all good stuff. You also put on, and it hasn't been lately, but it was a couple weeks ago, a storm chasers class and all that good stuff.
Yeah, yeah, we did this one spotting class at the ATV building in Guthrie a couple weeks ago, and hope to have another one soon over down in the South District for Oak Cliff and Deer Creek area.
Okay. So with that, Sheriff Thad Row, you have anything you'd like to...
No, sir, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Ma'am, you're a county officer. You're allowed. Now you're allowed to speak, and you haven't got nothing to say.
But that means it's in the rules. I like speaking when it's not.
I love it. All right, Monty.
I do. I'm just curious if we ever got a quote on the six-story roof with your roof guy.
I have not received a quote from him yet. I'm not, um, gotten any numbers.
That's all I got.
Thank you.
Okay. Cody?
We got more rain coming up. We're trying to catch up after the last rain. Started getting a good amount of rock into so we can start repairing some of our bad areas. Other than that, we're getting ready to start our Meridian Road project. We finished up our Otis Road project, and we're also getting ready to start our Coast Road project. So that's what we're at right now.
Is the Meridian the REAP project?
Meridian is the REAP project. We're going to reover, we're going to overlay the mile south of Indian Meridian to Industrial. Or south of 105 on Indian Meridian to Industrial.
Good. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. I'd like to, so we just finished laying a mile asphalt, a new mile in Logan County, in South County, on Charter Oak, going east of Broadway over to Bryant. That area over there with the little, little circle, half-circle drive, they called it a patchwork quilt of asphalt patches, is what it was affectionately known as. We went in there, zipped that up, all that asphalt, put in some new shale, compacted that, put in some new rock on top of it, watered and compacted that in. It turned almost into like concrete when you do that, and then we put asphalt over the top of that. That was about three-eighths of a mile stretch that we did through there, and then put a two-inch overlay over, well, a two-and-a-half inch overlay in some spots, and maybe a little more in some others. Made some really nice aprons, going in and out of the housing additions through there. And I really want to thank Monty and his crew, District Three, coming down and helping us. We got to use our brand-new laydown machine, and that thing is amazing. It lays asphalt a lot, a lot smoother than our old one does or did, and the road turned out perfect. We really did a good job over there. They did a good job over there. I wanted to publicly thank Commissioner Perry for his help and him bringing his guys over to help us as well. And they, it was a, it was an iterative teaching process. By the end of the day yesterday, all of our District One guys were running the laydown machine. They had taught all of our guys how to do that, how to use it. It was a great learning experience, and we look forward to doing the same thing in District Two and helping Cody with the paving roads over there as well. I mean, when we all work together, we get more done. And I just wanted to leave our comments and move on to item 19 with that, with that thought.
But you guys did a good job, Martin. They really did. It was amazing.
Thank you, Monty. So, any, any other comments, announcements, going once, twice? All right. Item 19. Consideration of possible action on adjournment.
I'll move we adjourn.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.
Okay.